Like a very busy resolution day. So Garland, come join the crowd. Okay, the first one is Bike Month. So all you bikers, come on up. I do want to say I am still moving after riding the Mayor's Bike Ride. Okay, I didn't finish because you guys were so fast I was left in the dust. But I did, I think I did six miles.
Wow, that's great.
I thought it was pretty good, then my bike started acting up. It wasn't me, of course. But anyway. Okay. Whereas biking plays a vital role in creating healthier, safer, and more sustainable communities, and May has been celebrated nationally as Bike Month since 1956 by the League of American Bicyclists, including National Bike to Work Week from May 12th through the 16th, 2025, and Bike to Work Day, May 16th, 2025. And whereas Des Moines expansive network of 87 miles of paved trails and 27 miles of dedicated bike lanes supports over 1 million trips annually, offering vital routes for transportation, exercise, and recreation while helping reduce congestion and pollution. And whereas Des Moines' trail and bikeway system connects neighborhoods, parks, and workplaces across a 600-mile regional network, providing year-round mobility for residents and visitors. And whereas Move DSM, Vision Zero, and Adapt DSM demonstrate the city's commitment to building a transportation network that is safe, sustainable, and accessible to all. And whereas organizations like the Street Collective, the Iowa Bike Coalition, Advance Education Accessibility, and Advocacy helping Des Moines earn bicycle-friendly community recognition. And whereas continued investment in biking infrastructure promotes public health, environmental goals, and community equity. Now therefore, I Connie Bosin on behalf of the City Council and the residents of Des Moines do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Bike Month.
Yeah.
They bopped their bells. So, uh, did you want to have a few words? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Bosin, and thank you for recognizing National Bike Month and for supporting all cyclists on Saturday by participating in 37th Annual Mayor's Bike Ride. We've got lots of fabulousness representing the biking community in Des Moines. First, we have Lauren Koloff right here. She's the Executive Director of The Avenues. Ingersoll is the premier bike corridor in the city, and Lauren works hard to keep the red lanes clear of obstructions and safe for all riders. Lauren! And Jeff Wiggins over here, he's the Transportation Planner from Traffic and Safety, from Traffic and Transportation, and our official bike champion on the inside. Our city has more bike lanes and cyclists are safer because of Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
And Carrie Sherman and Kami White from Ward Four, from the Des Moines Chaper of All Bodies on Bikes, right here. These gals celebrate good bodies, good bikes, and good rides. Thank you. Yes. And as you mentioned, we have Luke Hoffman from the Iowa Bicycle Coalition as well. Thanks, Luke, for all your work. And Kimberly Stone and some little guys from Ward One. Kimberly is a mom and co-founder of the More Elementary Bike Bus. Kids ride the bike bus every Wednesday morning to school, and they are advocating to fill the bike lane gap on Urbendale Avenue.
Yay! Good job, guys!
And of course, the one and only Jeremy Lewis from the Street Collective, everyone's favorite biking nonprofit that provides valet bike parking at the farmer's market and other majors events, free bikes and accessories for folks that are experiencing homelessness, as well as for the youth in our community. Thank you, Jeremy.
Yay!
And I'm Carol Maher. I'm the founder of a new advocacy group in Des Moines called Ride On, Des Moines! And we're advocating for more bike lanes, more bike racks, and less obstructions in our bike lanes. And I also like to thank Dart, who is once again promoting biking board in the month of May, where if you hook your bike on the front of the bus, you get to ride for free. How good is that? Thanks, Dart! Now, we want to get a really rocking photo. Okay. It's all the way. Okay. Fight is rock! Woo! Woo! All right. Thank you so much. Good day, guys. Yeah! Good job! All right. Happy biking!
Okay, next. Okay. So if you are here, if you want to come on up, I think it's Black Bagel, The Toy Market, Chandelier of In Space, it's a Tupa Restaurant, 24K Juice, and Rock Room. So all of you, small businesses, come on up. Hopefully. Do we have anyone else? Anyone else that's here? Just come on up. Yeah, come on up. This is a very eventful day. Okay, do you have bells and whistles like the other group? Okay. Everybody up? Okay. So whereas America's progress has been driven by entrepreneurs who think big, take risk, and work hard. And whereas from the storefront shops that anchor our neighborhoods to the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstone of our nation's promise. And whereas small business owners have an infectious energy and a passion for their business and communities. And whereas when we support small businesses in Des Moines, jobs are created, culture is preserved, and dollars stay in our community. And whereas because this country's 33 million small businesses create nearly two out of three net new jobs in our economy, we cannot catalyze economic growth in America without supporting our entrepreneurs. And whereas the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies. And whereas the City of Des Moines is proud of its diverse small business and grateful for the essential role they play in our local economy. Now therefore, I Connie Bosin on behalf of the City Council and the residents of Des Moines do hereby proclaim May 4th through the 10th, 2025 as Small Business Week. And I urge all residents to support and join in this national effort to help America's small businesses do what they do best: grow their businesses, create jobs, drive innovation, and ensure that our communities remain as vibrant and tomorrow as they are today. So thank you very much for taking the risk and coming up with new and innovative businesses. We really appreciate it because I think that's the core of what is going to grow Des Moines. So, thank you all. So, did anybody want to say a few words? Come on up.
Yeah, just wanted to highlight, um, the city this year, we launched a new loan program, Small Business Impact Loan Program, kind of a pilot program to really fund a lot of our brick-and-mortar businesses in the city. So a lot of those awardees are here tonight. So we have The Toy Market that's here, we have 24K Juices that are here, we have Chandelier Events that is here, we also have Black Bagel that is here. Am I missing anybody else that is here tonight? No? Oh, Tupa Restaurant? Tupa Restaurant is here. And so we really, you know, we really are, we're here to highlight and celebrate our diverse small businesses that are all across the city, not just, you know, downtown or south side or north side, but all across the city. And this program is a really good way to interface with a lot of them. So they're all here, we're celebrating them, as well as our neighborhood commercial revitalization recipients. So we have Luis here from 4140 Park Avenue. Our Neighborhood Commercial Revitalization Program is a, it's a citywide program that we've been offering for a few years now that really is intended to help property owners fix up and kind of improve their properties with physical building improvements. And so Luis is planning on turning a vacant gas station into a new restaurant. And so there are projects like that all over the city in all wards of the city. So really exciting, and this is just a good time that we get to celebrate them. So, I'm sorry. Oh, and also our resource partners that are here tonight. Like, we have our SCORE business mentors that are here, our chambers, a couple of chambers that are here representing us, SBDC. And so really, we couldn't, at the city, you know, we have our Small Business Support Center, but we couldn't do it without our resource partners as well. So wanted to recognize them. Thanks.
Thank you. And Brianna, I just want to, again, applaud you because I know some of your farmer's market has moved into more permanent locations, and it's a great way to make us different than the other communities around us by having the diversity and the uniqueness. That's what's created the difference, I think, between us and some of our neighbors. So, again, thank you for being here. I guess we... Proud enough. Yeah, thanks for being here. In front of Chase Bank? Okay, drink water. Okay? Really good. Okay, thank you. Yeah, if you want to, you can say, or if you have to go, you, okay. Drinking Water Week. Come on up. Amy, just you. Just you, since you're, uh, when, leaving?
On your way out.
Okay, we're going to talk about clean water. Excuse me? Okay. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily life and is an essential purpose to the health and hydration and hygiene needs for the quality of life our citizens enjoy. And whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, and support for our economy. And whereas the hard work performed by the Des Moines Water Works in designating capital projects ensuring the cleanliness and the quality of water meets all drinking water safety standards, maintaining the infrastructure our region relies on to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to consumers' taps. And whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend. And the residents of Des Moines are called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, practice water conservation, and get involved with their water by familiarizing themselves with it. Now therefore, I Connie Bosin on behalf of the City Council and the residents of Des Moines do hereby proclaim May 4th through the 10th, 2025 as Drinking Water Week. So again, would you like to say a few words on your last time at the City Council meeting?
I would, actually. I just want to, Mayor, I want to thank you and the council for taking the time to support and recognize the men and women of Des Moines Water Works who answer the call 24 hours a day, 365 days a year to ensure that we have clean, safe drinking water for our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you for all of your service and what you've done to create such a magnificent water system. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is for the Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. So are you here to represent?
I am.
I didn't know if any of us...
That's...
Okay, okay. Whereas the month of May is Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And whereas the Des Moines is home to nearly 17% of all AA-NHPI community members living in Iowa, and nearly 7% of the total Des Moines population are AA-NHPI residents. And whereas we honor the history and the valuable contributions of the AA-NHPI communities in Des Moines. And whereas May 18th is the birthday of Vincent Shin, who was brutally murdered in a hate crime in 1982. His murder fueled a national Asian American activist movement that continues to this day. And whereas in the AAPI community, this problem is often compounded by cultural, religious, and linguistic barriers that can keep these youth from seeking and receiving help. And certain AAPI groups, including South Asian, Muslim, Sikh, Micronesian, LGBTQ+ immigrant, and limited English proficient youth, are more likely to be the targets of bullying. 80% of Asian American youth report being bullied online in or in school. 70% of AAPI youth express anger over the current anti-Asian hate, and over 11,000 cases of anti-AAPI hate crimes reported since 2020. And now, here, therefore, I Connie Bosin on behalf of the City Council and the residents of Des Moines do hereby proclaim May 18th through the 10th, 2025 as AAPI Day against bullying and hate. Furthermore, I encourage all residents to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, compassionate, and impactful for all. So, would you like to say a few words?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you so much. So I want to take the time to thank the City of Des Moines for the recognition. I also want to help promote AAPI Month, being Asian Heritage Month with celebration, so the Asian Heritage Festival that's happening on May 23rd and 24th here on Western Gateway Park. This year is a special year because we are celebrating the 50th anniversary of the refugee resettlement through Governor Ray. And so this year, we are, our theme is Celebration in Full Bloom, which represents the resettlement of our refugees, as well as the second, and third, and fourth generations that are here in Des Moines and are blossoming because of the resettlement.
Thank you very much. Here, we'll get a picture. Please take the roll.
Bosin.
Here.
Simonson.
Here.
Voss.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Westergaard.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item number two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended, and tonight we have 35A and 35B is withdrawn by the city manager. 36 is withdrawn by the city manager. Regular agenda items are 48B has been added. Final consideration of ordinance above waiver requested by the applicant requires six votes. 55B added. Final consideration of ordinance above waiver requested by Chris Johansson, Neighborhood Services Director, requires six votes. 68 added. Final consideration of ordinance above waiver requested by Cody Christensen, Development Services Director, requires six votes. 63 is the updated speaker's list.
Move approval.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item number three is approving the consent agenda. Those are items three through 47. These are routine items and will be enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless pursuant to council rules. Council requests an item to be removed or to be considered separately. And on the consent items, 4A, Coleman wishes to speak. 4I, Coleman is a no. Number five, Coleman and Voss are no. 23 and 31, Simonson has a conflict of interest.
Move approval.
I'm, can I register 4A as a no too? I'm sorry, if I wasn't clear.
So you don't want to speak?
I do want to speak, but I'd like...
Okay, and then?
Then you have to... Oh, thank you.
We'll come back.
That's why she didn't put it down.
Move approval.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Next item is 49. On request from Jose Rosario Masias, owner, regarding a property located in the vicinity of 6120 Indianola Avenue, Geo parcel number 782426477015, to rezone the property from N1A Neighborhood District to limited N1A-2 Neighborhood District to allow the development of the property for a two-household duplex residential use. A is first consideration of ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above waiver requested by applicant requires six votes. Again, the first party of interest within 250 feet. If you would like to come up and speak and state your name and address or ward.
I'm representing him.
Okay, you can still state.
Good evening. My name is Julia Mena. I am a real estate agent with Remax Gamset, and I am representing Jose Masias, the owner of the property 6120 East Indianola Avenue. Jose has requested the rezoning of this land in order to get a duplex built. So he will need to get the rezoning approved in order for this to happen. So I'm here representing him. I'm the listing agent of this property that is now pending, is under contract, but the sale will only proceed if the approval happens. Otherwise, the buyers wouldn't buy it. So the buyers have been very involved with planning and everything for this to happen. So that's the reason why we need that rezoning happening. Plus, previously, we have also had some potential buyers, but also they needed the rezoning, and they were not willing to go through the process. So these buyers, the Roth family, they are, they have been willing to go through the process, which they have waited until now. So that's the main reason why we need the rezoning.
Just a question, are you renting each side or are you selling each side?
Selling. Yes, selling.
So they'll be owner occupied?
This is a piece of land that where this duplex...
Yeah, but once you build the duplex, are you renting each side of the duplex or are you selling each side of the duplex?
They will be renting.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other speakers? Okay.
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move 49A and B.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. The next item is 50. On request from Urban Dreams Isaiah Knox Officer regarding two parcels located at 1411 and 1419 7th Street to amend the Plan DSM creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification of the properties from low-medium density residential within a community node to medium-density residential within a community node, and to rezone the properties from N5 Neighborhood District to limited NX1 Neighborhood Mix District to allow the development of residential row homes. A is first consideration of the ordinance above. First is the parties of interest that are within 250 feet. Is anyone wishing to speak to this? See no one? Is there, second, is there any german comments from the public?
I was with the developers last week at the Riverbend Neighborhood Association. The project has been very well received. This is an empty lot. Not only is it going to take a bit of the city that has been some problem, but it's going to clean it up and make a nice home for some folks. So proud of Urban Dreams, Isaiah Knox and his team. I will move this 50 and 50A. If we have the support, can I waive the final reading under the...
Rule 42A.
Under approval of Rule 42A.
And just one quick question. Is this for six townhouses or row houses? Is that right?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Is that the number?
Yes. From the outside, it actually looks like four. It's a, it's a really, it's a really well-designed infill. So the two middle, what looks like two units is actually four because they're smaller units in the middle, but it's a, it's a great project.
Yeah, it's definitely needed, and I'll take care of some problems in the area.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Next item is...
Did we waive then both the readings or do we have to vote again?
Yes.
He did. Perfect. Or 42A. Okay.
Okay. Number 51. On request from United Properties Investment Co., LLC, Michael A. Capola Officer regarding approximately 50.42 acres of property, including multiple parcels located in the vicinity of the intersection of Echo Valley Drive and Golf House Drive, Geo parcel 91000060291, to amend the Plan DSM creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification proportions of the property from community mixed use, parks, and open space, and development control zone to community mixed use and development control zone, and for review and approval of the First Amendment of the United Properties Echo Valley PUD Planned Unit Development Conceptual Plan to allow the development of a new residential and commercial uses. German comments from the general public, two minutes per person to speak, 10 minutes maximum. Anyone here wishing to speak?
Seeing none.
Seeing none, Mayor. I'll move item 51.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote. Mr. Coleman?
I'm sorry.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. A is first consideration of the ordinance above. First is the parties in interest that are within 250 feet. Is anyone wishing to speak to this? Seeing no one, is there, second, is there any germane comments from the public?
I was with the developers last week at the Riverbend Neighborhood Association. The project has been very well received. This is an empty lot. Not only is it going to take a bit of the city that has been some problem, but it's going to clean it up and make a nice home for some folks. So proud of Urban Dreams, Isaiah Knox and his team. I will move this 50 and 50A. If we have the support, can I waive the final reading?
Or roll 42A?
Under approval of rule 42A.
And just one quick question, is this for six townhouses or row houses? Is that right?
One, two, three, four, five, six, yes. From the outside, it actually looks like four. It's a, it's a really, it's a really well-designed infill. So the two middle, what looks like two units is actually four because they're smaller units in the middle, but it's a, it's a great project.
Yeah, it's definitely needed, and I'll take care of some problems in the area.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Next item is?
Did we waive then both the readings or do we have to vote again?
Yes.
He did. Perfect, or 42A.
Okay. Okay. Number 51. On request from United Properties Investment Co., LLC, Michael A. Capola Officer regarding approximately 50.42 acres of property, including multiple parcels located in the vicinity of the intersection of Echo Valley Drive and Golf House Drive, Geo parcel 91000060291, to amend the Plan DSM creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification proportions of the property from community mixed use, parks and open space, and development control zone to community mixed use and development control zone and for review and approval of the First Amendment of the United Properties Echo Valley PUD Planned Unit Development Conceptual Plan to allow the development of a new residential and commercial uses. Germane comments from the general public, two minutes per person to speak, 10 minutes maximum. Anyone here wishing to speak?
Seeing none, Mayor, I'll move item 51.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, please vote.
Nice.
Mr. Coleman?
I'm sorry.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 52. Request from Raccoon Valley Investment Company, LLC, Michael A. Capola Officer regarding approximately 43.9 acres of property on two parcels located in the vicinity of 2909 County Line Road, Echo Valley Drive for review and approval of a Second Amendment to the Airport Business Park 2 PUD Planned Unit Development Conceptual Plan to allow residential development. Again, germane comments for up to two minutes per person. Anyone wishing to speak?
Seeing none, I'll move item 52.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Number 53. On request from WCMRP DeMoyne Center LLC, Michaela Scott Officer regarding property located at 5,000 Southeast 14th Street for review and approval of a Third Amendment to the Southdale PUD Planned Unit Development Conceptual Plan to allow use of the tenant bay known as 5116 Southeast 14th Street for a liquor store, use selling alcohol, liquor, wine, and/or beer for off-premise consumption. Plan and zoning commission recommends denial. You can choose one alternative below, A is to deny, or B, continue the hearing until May 19th, 2025, and direct the city manager and the legal department to prepare the necessary legislation to approve. Again, germane comments from the general public, two minutes per person to speak, up to 10 minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this?
Your Honor, I see done. I will move 53A and deny, along with the planning zoning recommendation and the neighborhood. I've heard from quite a few of them, this isn't, we've got enough liquor stores on East 14th, and we're going to go ahead and deny this one.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 54. On approval of the non-exclusive license agreement with QuickTrip Corporation for the use of a portion of University Avenue and 6th Avenue right-of-way adjoining 614 University Avenue and 1196th Avenue for snow-melting, de-icing, and irrigation improvements for $550. Again, germane comments. Two minutes per person. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
I'll move it. Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 55. On amendments to Chapter 134 of the DeMoyne Municipal Code, modifying group living descriptions, signage regulations, industrial use categories, accessory building definition, and the outdoor storage description. A is first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above waiver requested by Chris Johansson, Neighborhood Services Director, requires six votes. Again, germane comments from the general public up to, up to 10 minutes, two minutes per person. Anyone wishing to speak?
I will move this. I appreciate the staff taking a look at it. We talked about the weakness in our current language, and I appreciate it being tightened up.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 56. On fluid drive rehabilitation from George Flag Parkway to W. Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway. Resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder as inroads LLC, Joseph J. Minett, CEO, for $711,777.50. Council Communication number 25-171. A is the approval of contract and bond. General comment from, can only be on the plans, specifications, form of documents, engineer's estimate, or low bidder designation. Two minutes per person up to 10 minutes. Anyone wishing to speak?
I love that the 50 cents is included in the end.
You can take Bill's old roll and.
Exactly. Put a cup up.
Yeah. But seeing none, other than the comment on the 50 cents, I'll move item 56 and 56A.
Second.
Great stretch to get approved.
Let's be done with it.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 57. On Intelligent Transportation Systems, ITS, upgrade Phase 5. Resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder as Van Mannen Electric Incorporated, Nathan Van Mannen, President, $1,339,611.98. Council Communication number 25-172. A is approval of the contract and bond. Anyone wishing to speak? If not?
Seeing? Go ahead. I'll move item 57 and 57A.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The hearings are now ended at 5:15. Next item is?
4A.
I'll turn that over to Councilman Coleman.
I appreciate the mayor and council letting me speak to this for a minute. I am one that thinks that our liquor license regulations are not stiff enough. Ironically, Joe just had the chance to speak to this on an application on the South Side. Several years ago, Jeff Lester, our city attorney, and I served on a statewide panel about how to, how to, how to do things a little bit differently. I noticed on our website that we have almost no regulations that the state doesn't require us to have, and I would again like to take a deep dive into how we might regulate these a little bit more. I'll, I'll give you a couple of specific examples. Like I've spoken about in recent weeks about vape shops, I think we can use buffer areas and the density of them to make sure that they're, that they're spread out. I think there is additional things that we could do in terms of zoning and restrictions around other uses, expanding the, the church and school and preschool kind of footprint that we use. I think we could expand that. I particularly believe, and, and after watching, you know, the city and my, my neighborhoods pretty closely for a generation, I, I think we have problems at classy liquor license, which is where they have liquor, beer, wine for takeout where they leave, at locations where there is only one staff person. That's probably not a matter of zoning, but I, I, if I could, if I could dream up a rule that would make our communities more safe, it would be that you couldn't have a liquor carryout license without an establishment that had at least two staff on duty. I think we find that at some of the larger national C-stores and others that, that, that now do have liquor license that we grant them, but the ones where only one person is working overnight, I think they've been a haven for problems and enforcement of, of good behavior, and I'd, I'd like to see the city do something to tighten our liquor license rules. I don't, I don't have a proposal, but I would love it if our city manager and our city attorney would collaborate on it. I, I don't think we, we, I don't think we need more of these classy liquor licenses. I think there's plenty of places for people to, to buy liquor. I never have a problem. I, I'm not against people drinking, but I do think there is a way that we can manage this in a way that keeps our neighborhood safe and, and vibrant and pedestrian, walkable, and, and everybody feeling safe. So I, I would like, I'd like to deal with it and see what kind of restrictions we could come back with it, would have the support of the council.
Okay, well, we will turn that over to the attorney and the city manager to look into what other regulations we could do to tighten it up, if that's in agreement with, a consensus with the rest of our group.
Yes, and so as long as they're doing this, are they going to do the vape shops at the same time or?
I think people are talking about vape shops right now, like.
Legislation.
I was in a meeting somewhere where somebody from the staff was saying that there were discussions underway about regulations, but I, I hope that is underway. We referred it to them a couple of weeks ago. Josh had some additional ideas and talked about some restrictions they've created in Iowa City, which was really instructive for me. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we'll have, turn it over to see what we can do, and for this
For this item, I'm a no vote, so I'd appreciate somebody else moving it.
And this is a new application?
Yeah.
Isn't like, because there's some other ones in here that are, they're renewals, but this is a new application.
I'm not asking you to vote against it. I think these are complicated, but it would be helpful if somebody else moved.
So if we denied this, what recourse does?
They would be able to appeal to the state, and if there's no basis in the record, that the denial would likely not be upheld by the state.
I think we need to establish some additional rules, and, and so when they do appeal it to the state, we have a better basis.
I'll move 4A.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, please vote.
Thanks, Joe.
Six yes, one no.
Okay, motion carries. Next item is amending Chapter 114 of the Municipal Code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. Council Communication number 25-168. A, parking and loading zone modifications. One is 3rd Street, Vine Street to Court Avenue. Two is Vine Street to Southwest 3rd Street to Southwest 2nd Street. B is parking modifications, East 22nd Street between East University Avenue and Ankeny Avenue. C is parking modification, Southeast 17th Street between East Virginia Avenue and East Pleasant View Drive. D is parking modification, Aurora Avenue between 39th Place and Shawnee Avenue. E is parking modification, Broad Street between Southwest 5th and South Union Street. F is code correction, streets intersecting East Vine Street between Johnson Court and Southeast 16th Court. G is code correction, 14th Street between Laurel Street and Aurora Avenue. H is code correction, Dixon Street between East Washington Avenue and Aurora Avenue. I is code correction, modifications related to the right-of-way vacations. One is East 18th Street from East Washington Avenue to East Jefferson Avenue. Two is East Jefferson Avenue from East 17th Street to Dixon Street. Three is Mattern Avenue, East 17th Street to Dixon Street. J is code correction, Park Street between 6th Avenue and 7th Street. K is corner clearance parking restrictions, 1, 47th Street and Ovid Avenue. 2, East Washington Avenue and East 32nd Street. Is there any others?
Nope.
That's it? Okay, with that, is there a motion to approve?
Yes, I'll move approving 58A, 1 and 2. 58B, 58C, 58D, 58E, 58F, 58G, 58H, 58I, 1, 2, and 3. 58J, 58K, 1 and 2. And, and then do we need to do a?
Wave.
Wave 42A to waive the second, third readings?
Just real quick, I, there's a lot of people that are sitting out here. I just don't know if they're here for all these corrections.
They're probably here, are you here for some of them? Okay.
I think we should.
Okay, if you, we can give.
And I don't think we should waive the second and third if there's people here to.
Yeah.
Like two minutes? If, if you want to come up and speak to a specific item, or which one you want to speak to, we'll give you two minutes.
I think it's, I can't. It's D.
D. There are quite a few. So this is Aurora Avenue between 39th and Shawnee?
Yes.
Okay, if you would like to state your name and address.
My name is Matt McKibben. Address is 3901 Aurora, right smack dab in the middle of that, as are a number of my neighbors.
Okay.
We were surprised by the notice, and we're not very happy about it. We all understand the need for safety. It's a, a curve in the road, but none of these neighbors, or myself, live on that curve, and all of our properties are going to be affected by it. And we don't quite see that that's fair or easy. A number of our neighbors have small businesses. None of them are, I wouldn't say they're multifamily, but they have large families with a lot of cars. The only way they can park is on the street. To take away the only place they have to park doesn't fix the issue. It literally kicks the can down the road, because all of these cars are going to park somewhere. They're just not going to be where it's convenient for them. There are bookending this section of road, two intersections that are uncontrolled. There are never police officers, not that I want police officers necessarily out on my street every day, but no one checks the speed there. No one check it. I feel like maybe there's other options, or maybe limiting how much they've decided to mark as no parking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish?
Mike Hoffing, 3815 Aurora. Where, in front of our house would be the first open spot that would be allowed to park, but in my opinion, if you took away all the parking there, and that's, there is a lot of cars that park there regularly during the weekend, weekends, and I feel that if that was made a non-parking area, that would open it up, so people would be able to go faster through there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish?
My name is Roger Davidson. I guess I'm the culprit between, with my neighbor there, but I live right outside of the curb. Well, there was a family across the street that have approximately five to six cars, no way to put it, and they're the ones that are out there. Well, when I take my great-grandson to school, I can't remember the school's name, but it sets to the south, north off of 39th. They come up, four or five cars come up at a time, they turn on Aurora, because it's a through fare. It runs for about a quarter of a mile. There are no stop signs, there's no speed bumps, it's just Grand Central Station, and I mean, they roll, because they know they have the right-of-way. But the cars coming down to the west, you're kind of in between. There's a lot of congestion on the curb, I, I know that, but like I said, where are we going to park? I called down and talked to the gentleman that sent the letter out. He said parking is not our concern. Well, it's going to concern us when we go to sell the house, because you have people that have multiple cars. You park two or three in your driveway, what are you going to do? We, we didn't buy a house over on Madison because of that. There's no parking. We're going to get in the neither side on this side, especially with, like the gentleman said, he's going to be the first one. This family that's got the cars, they're going to park somewhere, whether it's two blocks down or three blocks, and then that's going to piss off everybody else, because they can't park in front of their house. It's a mess.
Okay.
Like I say, the through fare is the biggest part. Speed bumps, something like that might be fine. I've been there for nine years, and the only thing that's happened, a girl hit the back of my car in the street on a bicycle. That's it. I mean, we're talking about a safety curb. I mean, there's ways to slow people down, you know, so everybody can be pleased with this. I have, my grandson, he comes over and they help us, we're going on 79, me and my wife. Where do they park? Where'd they park on Christmas? I mean, you're taking an eighth of a mile away from everybody. The people down the street around the curb, they already parked there. So I mean, we're at a, I don't know if I'm explaining it right, but I'm explaining it the only way I can.
No, you got it. We understand. We understand an issue with that.
Yeah.
That curve.
Because if they went up to Madison and came down, there is a stop sign.
Right.
So they do have to stop, but on here, it's nothing but.
Straight through.
A freeway, and the motorcycles are the worst. They come down and they try to beat. They come down and they try to beat the cars.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, we'll turn it over to...
Jeremy Gertis, 4019 Lower Beaver Road, president of the Lower Beaver neighborhood, but I'm not here on their behalf today. This is just somebody who drives that road every single day, multiple times a day, and the parking is challenging to see through. But equally challenging, there is a house on the south side of the street that has a large bush that obstructs your visibility across that curve. I think we need to do a little more studying to figure out what's going on here and see if we can't improve visibility all the way around, because you can take all the parking out and you still won't be able to see down that curve because of that bush, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy. I didn't, I received some complaints about the parking, and in fairness to everybody here, it really came, in fairness, to the point you made. I agree with much of what you say. It was from people complaining about one or two property owners that had way too many cars parked. The city doesn't have very many tools to deal with that, and so I passed that on, I think a week or two ago. The traffic department finished their study, and we got some feedback. I think the letters or cards that came back were on the side of being against this change, but there were people that voiced some support. I would like, at minimum, not to pass the final reading today. So like, when we do traffic regulations, it's part of our zoning ordinance, we have to vote on it three times. We could waive that. I'm suggesting that we don't, so we can take an extra look at the suggestion that Jeremy makes about trees and other safety, and to take a look at any alternatives that we could have. I do, I am sensitive. I live on a street where a lot of us have parked on the street. It really harms everybody's quality of life when you can't do that, but I'd like the street to be as safe as possible. So if all we did was pass the first reading or delay this one, I would appreciate it so we can take a second look.
Can we waive the second and third reading for everything else?
That's what we're checking it right now. That's what I asked. If we could do that, it depends if it's all written as one ordinance.
I think the problem might be that it's written as one ordinance.
So why don't we just... Yeah, so...
He made the motion to the first reading, didn't he?
I did, and I can...
You withdraw the 42A?
Yeah.
I'll...
Okay, so the motion is...
Jeff would...
So it's all...
It's all connected together.
It's all written as one ordinance. Council can either strike that item and direct staff to have further discussion and pass the entire thing, or just approve the first reading.
Let's strike D and not vote on it at all, and send it back to staff.
And then clear out the rest of them.
And then we'll clear out all the rest of them.
That would work.
That works even better for me.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Do you want to make the motion, or just, since you made the original motion?
Do you want me to reread the whole thing, and strike item D?
Strike item D, and we'll waive the second and third reading pursuant to Rule 42A for A through K, and I has 1, 2 and 3, and K has 1 and 2. Is that, is that good enough?
That is.
A also has 1 and 2.
Yep, and A has 1 and 2.
So do we have everything down that we need to approve?
Everything but...
Everything but D.
We're good? Okay. Please vote.
I just wanted to say one other, one other thing for the benefit of council, that A, 1 and 2 is implementing one of the recommendations that we got from Responsible Hospitality Institute on how to make some improvements around Court Avenue from a safety and just managing nightlife a little better. It's creating a, it's adding some parking, and then it's using some of the additional spots to create a ride-sharing taxi, ride-sharing pickup zone, so that we funnel that to one area and make it a little safer rather than having those vehicles.
Fantastic.
Just wanted to point that out, that appreciate staff continuing to work on those recommendations and making the positive changes where we can.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded? Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. So will we review item...
D.
D. So for that, you will start over and look at it again. So the next item is 59?
While we're still on that, would it be appropriate to request that the, these neighbors who are in attendance be notified, just so they know what's happening?
Yes.
I was going to say if Jeremy and I couldn't maybe meet, and we can make contact with you. If you'll give me your number as you walk out, I'll make sure you get included.
If you didn't have any notification before, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is 59, amending Chapter 42 of the Municipal Code Relating to Emergency Actions.
I'll move item 59, Your Honor.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote. Item 60, amending Chapter 135 of the Municipal Code Establishing Industrial Accessory Building Type and Modifying Site Plan Review Procedures. A is the final consideration of ordinance above. Waiver requested by Cody Richardson, Development Services Director, requires six votes.
I'll move item 60 and 60A.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote. Motion carries. Item 61, amending Chapter 26 of the Municipal Code Relating to Stormed Shelters for Educational Occupancies and to Adopt the State Electrical Code, State Mechanical Code, and State Plumbing Code. Council Communication Number 25-184 A. Final consideration of the ordinance above. Waiver requested by Cody Richardson, Development Services Director, requires six votes.
I'll move item 61, 61A, Your Honor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 62, amending Chapter 26 Relating to Sign and Billboard Permits. A is the final consideration of ordinance above. Waiver requested by Chris Johansson, Neighborhood Services Director, requires six votes.
I'll move 62 and 62A, Your Honor.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Sorry.
Seven yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Request to Speak. We provide speakers under the public speaking portion the opportunity to address the council for up to three minutes each for up to 20 speakers for a total of one hour. Speakers will be called forward individually, and we ask everyone to please state their name and address or ward prior to providing comments. Please keep comments germane and avoid references to personalities or character attacks, as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. As a reminder to the council and the public, this public speaking time is to hear your comments, and if there is a need to follow up, we will get it to the appropriate staff and/or council to follow up after a time after the meeting. Thank you for your support of Des Moines. The first speaker is Kathy Burns.
I'm Kathy Burns, 735 19th Street. My husband Ed and I, representing Birds and Bee's Urban Farm, want to thank the entire council and the city staff for the support for the proposal that we submitted, requesting an urban orchard be created somewhere in the city in a community of need. And we were just thrilled to get that news from Brianne Bye and Nick Tarpe just a few weeks ago. We are seeing the momentum for local foods and making local foods normal and expected in the city grow and grow, and that is a really good thing, considering what we're facing for our future with more people moving to the city. And we want to take it a step farther, because Iowa is the state that's known to feed the world. That might be a stretch in some terms, because a lot of the crops grown in Iowa don't feed people. They feed cars, and they feed our cattle and other livestock. But we see more and more small-scale food producers emerging, and there is huge opportunity, not just for Iowa, but for the city of Des Moines in this. It's an extremely popular thing around the U.S., and we would like to see, we think the time is right for Des Moines to become and to declare itself the local food capital of the U.S. It sounds really exciting, really inviting, and we think that we are on our way now, and I think the city should just embrace it, and we should make it our own, and find a time to declare ourselves as such. So I'll thank you again.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ed Fallon.
Good evening, and thank you, Ed Fallon, 735 19th Street. And again, I echo what Kathy said, wouldn't that be great for Des Moines to be the local food capital of America? And you know, you've already made a great start. I mean, just walking down, you're seeing all the strawberries in bloom around City Hall. That's great. Do more of that. There's some over at Grayslake as well, but strawberries everywhere. You know, they're a great ground cover, keep the weeding down, and provide food for, you know, for people and even some animals, so keep that going. Again, I keep reminding people when they come to talk to us about chickens, that we have the most, you know, freedom-oriented chicken ordinance in the state that I know of, perhaps in the country. And I know that there's been some concerns about that, but I think we addressed it in a way that was equitable. And again, it's a beacon. People like that. People like the fact that they can grow food in their front yard, and even on the parking strip within some restrictions. And we're very excited, as Kathy said, that the city is ready to move forward on the first of what we hope are many urban orchards. We understand that the first place we proposed, the triangles up by Cottage Grove and the interstate, didn't work for various reasons, but we understand there's enthusiasm for Drake Park. Great start. We also understand the city staff are looking at lots in Des Moines that could be used for other types of urban agriculture, maybe other orchards, maybe community gardens, maybe even having professional farmers come in, farm that land, and actually make a living doing it. I think the important thing there is, once that land is committed to agriculture, it needs to stay that way. I know in the past, we've seen a lot of good farmed areas become developed, industrial or commercial, and you know, so much effort goes into building the topsoil and building the infrastructure. It's always a real sad situation when that happens, so I'm glad we're looking at lots that could be preserved as food production. So thank you for that. Again, my only comment about the Drake Community Orchard, Drake Park Orchard, is that now would be a better time to plant than fall. You know, we went out there, did a little survey, I know others have been out there to look at it. It looks like it could accommodate about 60 trees, which would be awesome, and a lot of variety. But again, planting now would be better than planting in the fall. Again, as I've said before, if you want an apple pie today, you should have planted an apple tree five years ago, so let's keep going. And again, think about the idea of Des Moines as the local food capital of the U.S. I think it could be, I think the reality is already in sight, given all the things that we already do. Keep it going, and that could be a nice selling point. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacai Dupree?
Your Honor, I'll move 63A and B to receive and file.
I'll second that. Can I ask that Scott check to see if the plantings couldn't happen earlier, if it's better for the trees and...
Sure, check on the status.
Yeah, let us know. Thank you.
We will do that, so that we can get that apple pie next year, huh? No, in five years. Five years.
By the fair...
By the fair, right.
Yeah.
Seven yes.
It's been moved and seconded, and the motion has carried. So with that...
Motion adjourned, Your Honor.
Is there a second? All in favor, boys, vote?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for being here.